Okay. All right, I'd like to call the order, the monthly meeting for the White Lake Library Township. Board of Trustees. Think I got that order backwards.
You did.
Oh, okay. Anyway, let's start off with a call to order, that's me, and then the Pledge of Allegiance for everybody. Okay. And then Karen will have more calls.
Vice President Eric Lashawell. President Ryan Newton.
President.
Secretary Carrie Francis, the President. Trustees Becky Knapp. Project William Honsbury.
President.
Director April Feedelson and Assistant Director Amy Rosen are also on the minutes.
Okay. Then can I have someone approve the agenda?
Yeah, motion to approve the agenda is presented.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's one, two, three, four, five. Yes votes. All right, and then we have public with us today. Would you like to say anything? Do you have comments or anything, or just attending, or? Okay, do we have to do their name and address in the minutes?
I don't answer.
Reason why we are dark in the corner.
Because we have the display.
Well, can we have the lights on before the presentation starts?
The next thing.
We'll get it.
If you want it out now, I.
No, 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 I don't.
It's okay to go down.
Second, but.
Karen, I can't remember if we are supposed to get their name and address. If they are just watching.
Are you sure not?
All right, well, we're glad to have you with us. If you have any questions, that if you save them to the end, we'll go over it then. Okay? All right. Um. And that would bring us to our next item, which is our presentation on how the website is going. We're getting a preview tonight also, April.
Presentation.
Yeah. Okay.
So we're going to have our website designer with us. And also, we have Heather who is part of the website. Me, Libby Team. Justin, we are here and ready. Can you hear?
I see his lips moving.
He's meters. Hold on, I'll back. I'm ready to make sure the sound has been on our end.
Can you hear us, Justin? Yes. There we are.
Here we have. Hold on, we want to make sure on our big speaker, so if you mean one side. Try that again, say something now.
One, two, three.
Oh, there it is.
There we go. Okay, we are ready.
Okay, perfect. Oh, I'm glad it's sure. And so. The office, who's been working on. Far. All right, you know, if you're often seeing my screen.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, perfect, so April, thank you again for the invitation. Thank you all for your time. The just having the moment to review the development site together thus far. So what you're looking at right now is our front loading home page. A few things have been tweaked and modified since our, I believe, our last meeting, it was just April, myself and Eric. So up top, we have our top bar navigation that includes quick access to the library's cell phone number, the catalog here, which is links to work into the discovery catalog. In addition to library calendar for all library events. And my account, it does take you directly to my account page with the mobile pop-up for patrons to log right in with their card number to make calls. In addition, is a custom feature here that does have the rotating hours for the day. Like quick glance visitor on the site to see if there's are currently holding or both the hours corresponding. So do all current hours, just with this toggle button here to see those here.
It works as now, where it says now open, if we're closed because of like snow or whatever, can we change that?
Will the holidays be reflected there as well?
Yes, we can add our late schedule to this, to this logic as well. In the event that there, if there is ever equipment weather or library has to close early, there is a feature that we can enable to highlight notification bar at the very top of the website to let visitors know that you guys are closed.
Isn't that something the staff can enable?
Yes, yeah, that's all staff, thanks, absolutely. Just below the top now is our main navigation column here that hosts, which will host all of the subsequent pages for the website. So currently we have our welcome dropdown that has a breakdown by age of some of the, the top pages that have been kind of organized by myself as well as the website committee. This can be something that can be changed as we roll out or continue to build out these pages. But these were, it needs to top it for the current site and the hierarchy for the pages to come after this particular home pages. Thank you, here for services, split between two, what services can be done strictly here at the library. Print back scan, use a computer, this gives information about workstations that are available for patient usage. Exam proctoring, user study room, services from anywhere, just the same as well as options here. Some community resources for patients to utilize in adulting or staying. Full collection, again, split up in between these two columns, these two categories, both physical and digital collection, with the full rollout of both. All listed here, digital collections of resources, services paid by the library. Mailcat, of course, who love, Esha Academy, like just found out and got just to provide, but that's very, very cool. And good to have for patrons to utilize the service.
What does it look like when you pull, when you click on library of things?
Well, library things has not been completed yet, we're still working on the database that includes all of the library thing item. So the only thing that is completed as of right now in full and its totality is the homepage, actually, look at it.
Okay, thank you. Library of things is the ideal, Lynn. Yes.
Yeah, would some of that be considered service then? Like, we've had that discussion, so, yeah, that's why we're finalizing.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's, it's in between both of those names, correct? So both like your lab and library of things, kind of interchangeable, but it is very key for us to make sure that we have a dedicated description of library things and then have that proper rollout just before the website as well, so.
Well.
That's why.
Ken, um, so, so Becky's point, question was, you know, is it, is some of it under services? Can't you put library of things under both places and they both go to, then when you click on it, it's going to go to the same spot in the database?
Sure, yeah, we can, we can add it in any different, any place here in the top navigation.
But they're not going to be two step, if you click on library things from services and you click on library things from collecting, it's going to the same page?
It will go to, that'll land at the same page.
Great, great.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm going to understand that question, yes, it will land on, if there's any overlap essentially, absolutely, we can add that.
Because you don't want to have one page that's different, you know, and so then you get, you get things out of sync, right? So.
Correct, and it's tougher to manage, that's your staff as well, things need to be changed or updated. You'll see, once we get further down the homepage, where that effect, that metal comes in the way. Just a particular collection for digital libraries such as Libby, it's, it's in three different places, the homepage, right?
Great.
Because, you know, as you guys know, patients utilize that digital resource quite often, so even if they don't catch it or disappear in the top nav navigation menu, they'll still be able to get to it in other places on site. Thank you for that question. All right, so running along, we have, we point patron, patron interaction buttons. This will take us to four pages that we want to dedicate specifically for a given act page. So Reed will take you to a space where patients can select from different digital resources to check out a book, get some more information on borrowing, library materials, how to get a library card, what are the steps to do that on online form to check out, to apply for a library card, things of that nature. Explore will take me to different aspects of the site where you can literally look up different databases for resources. So all the resource databases will be in this particular place. Make list, more so just for a patron that would like to create or maybe if you guys have a major space. Information on creating a 3D print file, and send it in for staff or consideration to have made large print and having a bit of capabilities of submitting a large print file for printing at the library. And of course, support, which will definitely have your donation space, your endowment space, if you would like to have that linked. Volunteering, opportunities, all of that will show up here. And our idea again, what's behind this is really just for patron interaction, what would you like? Because you guys can see, this opens the website to a question and really to invite patrons to utilize the site in this, in the best way that they feel it will be best used for them. If you're looking for reading material, probably click the read interaction button, it gives a finalized group of options for what you may want to read or, or if it pertains to additional subscription based model for patrons to check out books and check out serfs.
Hey, Justin, is there, is there, is there, or is there going to be a way to access these little vignette things we deal on YouTube and whatnot, like where we talk to different authors or things like that?
Social media and YouTube and things like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
YouTube, you're talking YouTube integration?
Well, I know that the staff make short videos about different things that are going on in their departments or things that are new in their departments, or they might interview an author or something. Or they might say, these are my favorite five books, well, I'd like, if I was in Reed, I'd want to be able like to see Emily's top five books, that kind of stuff.
Yes.
And you're saying, yes.
Yeah, we can, yes, we can, we can add a spotlight showcase for, for a top reading list, which would definitely be in that same space. I think you, you just meant, you had just mentioned maybe even having maybe where you have a craft class. They film it and also have it posted on YouTube, that probably would land somewhere in the make place. Where a patron would go in and say, oh, we can create a nice Halloween craft problems coming up for kids. You can have that listed directly in that, that group of options for make. All great questions, thank you. And I guess in that same, that is this section here that is completely dynamic in the sense of staff's direct input for changes made to the sector. So new and noteworthy is, is all powered directly by information that staff injects directly from the WordPress back end, which I'll show you guys shortly. So if there is something that you, that you, that staff wants to showcase, rather than only being in one spot, it's okay to have it in multiple places for redundancy, so kind of exact same example I mentioned with the holiday, Halloween that has come and up. This is a benefit that you, that staff would want to have more traction on and to invite more patients to, you can have that information here as well as the events calendar, which is will be posted for that different month. Patrons can still get to that information from here. But it's also nice to have, again, additional spaces where those same rules apply. If you want to add any additional information here, this can be for events, this can be for new services that the library is now adding to the, the, the available services for patients to utilize, whether inside the library or away. Literally can be anything, on the back end, what I'll show you is exactly where that's placed. So we created a custom field type, which is literally called the exact same header as was currently shown on the website on the homepage. And those three examples that you're seeing rotated right here on the homepage are right here to be edited, so. Again, this is through all dynamic, all information that they, that staff has access to, can make changes to, add any details that they want to. And in fact, I've got our event date here already and the time of the event. Have the registration URL as well, this is coming directly from the library calendars information here. And what's also nice is we can add a D image, I'm actually going to remove, remove this image. I'm going to add add a new image here. I think we're going to add the Halloween bash. So quick image here. Update. If I go back to our homepage, give it a quick refresh, so you have the images automatically added dynamically directly on the homepage. So that applies to literally all of these tiles that staff can dynamically update, make changes to, add to, remove, whatever is needed, and as long as that registration URL is in fact in on that field directly in the item field here. This should then take you to the exact event directly in library calendar for page, the register.
Does WordPress have a, like, auto spell on it?
Auto spell check?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it goes as such.
So.
For all entries, all tags, it does have the parameters when you're typing into any field, if something is mis-selled, it will try to or should pay, you may want to look at that before you post, yes. So for any, any case where staff or anyone is updating any other information here, you have that, that parameter checked just before you post.
So this might not be about, I'm, I'm hoping it's about the website, well, like currently our website, if somebody goes in there and they want to do, and they've never signed up for a PIN for Libby before, they can't, they haven't come into the library, can they set their PIN from the website? Can they create their own PIN, you know, like in their account settings, can they? Do you know? If, if there is a way to be able to do it on the website, I have two people I know that just recently got a library card. They, it wasn't explained to them that they needed to have a PIN created here. They didn't actually, they were told about Libby and I was showing them how to do it, and then they couldn't get into Libby because they didn't have a PIN.
You do have to have an active account prior to see utilizing the server, yes.
So, but here says library, can you create a new library PIN here?
Yes, yeah.
Only what, Amy? Because right now, the website doesn't allow creative.
To get into it, I think you have to have their PIN to get into it, which is, it's a default channel at the last.
Okay, well, that's something that our circulation desk is missing telling people. Okay, thank you. I was hoping they could do it here.
You can, but so, so a patron does have to log into the catalog in order to do that. So I did log into the current catalog directly from the link, from the developed site. So as long as they can get to that section, no matter where they are, even if they're, let's say they're literally on a catalog, OPAC workstation, something to this effect, which you'll probably see. If they log in with their card number.
But they already have to have a PIN.
But they have to, that is correct, they have to know what their.
Website, they have to know their PIN.
Yeah, they have to know that it's the last four digits of their phone.
We're not telling people that. Okay. Actually, I'm glad you said that, because now I can say to them, your PIN is the last four digits of your phone number. I didn't know that either.
Yeah, it, yeah, if they, if they don't recall what their PIN is, if they, if they don't have it automatically already reset, it is, it isn't only the last four digits of the phone number.
And then they can go in and actually change it from here, okay, fabulous. Could we maybe make a little flyer, you know, to give people when they get a new card, that has that kind of.
It should be in our brochure, I'll talk to Kim and make sure that they're.
Okay.
Sharing that with people.
All right, great.
I hope that answered their question.
Yeah, it did, thank you.
Okay, all right.
This looks really nice.
Back here to this new and noteworthy, I'm going to actually update a few more images, because I actually, I did not add a image for these, just to kind of show you that staff does have that capability. This was friends meeting. Little meeting clip art here, and again, it doesn't necessarily have to, you know, be anything specific or any sizing. However, I did mention to the website committee that you'll have a universal set of image sizing, so that everything is uniform, everything was appropriate and sized correctly. But just again, for example purposes, this is, again, just, just being able to add that, that content directly into WordPress and then it appears dynamic on the homepage. Staff, this is the backend WordPress, staff has all of that, that privilege to, to update that information, no coding involved, nothing at all that needs to be updated here, HTML, it's all handled here.
So are they standard templates in WordPress that have the, you know, the, the font size for a title and, and the color and?
Yes, that's all dictated, that's all dictated in the theme itself.
Okay, great.
So currently, currently all that has been written is our theme colors, which matches the current library logo. As you can see, a few other accent colors just to add a bit of a difference between both the primary logo colors and the accent colors. A few other pieces to add a bit of accent for buttons that you guys see. To add buttons, some hover over color, that's the exact same effect here. And again, this is really just to break up a lot of the minimal style. We keep it all white just to make sure everything is legible, readable, ADA compliant. But yes, everything is dictated directly in the theme.
Okay.
So all of the fonts is, again, we wanted to keep it sanser, very basic, but have enough character that it can break up between the headers you just mentioned and the body of text, just like we have here. It's all very clean and legible, readable on, on that background color. I make it easy, makes it a lot easier to, to review and navigate the site. And in that same conversation, again, the website is also close responsive, so this would be the view of the site from cell phone. You'll see that like, like, pretty precise, they fully respond to the real estate that, that's currently allowed.
So if we have like, like we have, we have a closure, right, because of an ice storm. Where would that show up on your, if you're logging in on your phone?
It would appear just at the, the absolute top of the site, so there'd be a notification bar that appears just above this area.
Okay.
Let visitors know that the library is currently closing early due to this, due to weather.
Okay, great. That looks really nice.
Looks clean.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
One comment I have on it, where it's the now open button, or now open at the top, the green. If it's possible to make that also open the full hours, right now it's not a button at all, but it looks like a button.
It does look like a button.
Not the green one.
To make that a button, it was, it's currently not a button, that's, that's really just the accent that, that you can see very vibrantly if the library is closed or open. If you guys are closed, literally after eight o'clock, it's turned red.
Okay.
Yeah, now closed with the library hours. Yeah, and then you can toggle a few full hours to get the full readout of the rest of the week.
And so here, when you go back up, so where it says White Lake Township Library and you've got the hamburger next to it, it, does that pull down the whole menu? Okay.
Yeah. Yes. And are you.
Okay, so what I don't see, when, when you do the welcome, when you click on the welcome, where's about us?
Good for that.
Okay. Thank you.
We pan the, especially on mobile for the, for the smaller menu size. The main headers are on the right, but as it's executed and selected, all of the selections show up on the left to make it a bit easier to scroll, so as I'm scrolling and I'm left-handed, but I hold my phone at the right, my hand isn't covering the selections that I'm trying to select on my phone. And I can still with my thumb, select the different menu items or header items rather than the navigation.
So how do you get to the, oh, is it the calendar down below this?
Well, the calendar is in a few spots, the, the calendar.
There we go, okay, now, okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's the, that's the top, that's the top menu, that's the top header menu. So that's the very first thing everyone sees, the minute you get to the page. And I believe there is believe there is another spot for the calendar footer. But again, that can be added, I mean, that's not, we had kind of mentioned it earlier, there isn't any limit to where mini buttons or net navigation kind of lands, if it's just one or the other, we can, we can have it in however many places that it needs.
That's good.
Well, I'm going to focus, I try to get. Well, I'm the focus, I try to get, blow that silly, the matrix.
So there's a little chat button down here. Are we really gonna have a chat? And when's it, is the chat um available all the hours we're open?
We're discussing how we're gonna handle that, we're gonna have, there's gonna be canned responses that, so it may just say, oh, here are the hours, or check with us, or, I mean, we're, we're, Justin has been nice enough to give us um two, he's shown us live chat, and then this week we looked at see, it was live something, they're both live, but one was live chat, one's another one, but just to see what they look like.
Okay.
So are we going to do a live chat?
I want to do a live chat.
Okay.
So I heard live chat, and, and that, that was all I, I bet.
That was it.
Okay. Left off um, at the, at your library, uh, these are just quick action, quick access action buttons. Um, click the view full hours, um, library card information, so again, you know, how do I get a library card? I'm discussing some options on accepting library card applications online with form. Um, that will probably be in that same uh section or page where this leads to. Um, borrowing information, how many books can be checked out, late fee information, literally all things library card and all things library card app. Um, information. Information on all services, uh, this, this will just went directly to the all services page. Uh, so a patient can see everything that's available to them, both in the library and outside. Uh, answer reserve, base, and access to reserve right from here.
But you can't print.
Print?
You can't, it says print copy, so like, you can reserve a room right here, right?
No, you can't, you still have to call.
Okay, all right.
Um, you can print, you can, if you send it to our preference email.
Okay.
There'll be a section, there'll be a section in.
Well, we can print on websites. Okay, I was getting excited, I'm like, wow. Okay.
We'll make, we, the, the goal is really to make, make all services that's currently being utilized for well often, and also uh, to, to, to for better placement for patients that may not even know that their service is available. Uh, but also having them to uh access it just, just more easily as the new site is created, so for services and the fact where you can send an email to have a print job printed, um, we can easily just put a spot for mobile print jobs.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and have that highlighted, um, where they literally click the button, and, and the email files will appear, where you can literally send the print job directly to staff, uh, to print out.
Yeah, this looks great. Hmm, nice.
Our last section, again, is this, it's in that exact same uh, logic as the, the new and noteworthy section, where staff can directly uh, update and make changes to uh, stream and download section. Um, we've got a few here, Libby was talking about earlier, where it will take you directly to uh, the site in order for patients to utilize the service. Niche Academy, Bean Stack, hoopla, um, literally all information that uh or services rather, that you wanna have staff, wanna have patients accessible to, uh, and also have staff easily updated. From the backend here, the exact same uh setup has been uh created, configured. Uh, library services, that is where that, that carousel uh, dynamic information comes from, so as soon as we add additional services, those will appear in that space. If we need to make a change, if staff needs to make a change to a specific service that's already there, if you go right here, let's, let's say Libby's logo changes, we need to add the logo, you can do that right from here, um, if the access requirement is different. Um, I think one, we, we kind of discussed having an option for is maybe um, this service is only available in the library, maybe ancestry.com is another service. We wanna make sure that uh, patients that access it will uh, will see that something like this, in-house home.
Okay.
Um, that we don't know that this service or this particular uh, subscription is only available if you're in the library and it was like.
So I noticed that you have published dates and times on the right, you know, in WordPress. Does it, uh, does it log who made those changes as well?
Yes, everything made in WordPress is logged.
I, but it doesn't log the individual that made that change? I'm assuming that, I'm assuming that everybody that logs into this to make changes has to have a unique ID. And so.
Were, and two factor authentication.
And does it log, so when somebody comes in here and like changes that carousel, um, or changes a, it changes like the Libby logo, does it, and it shows it's when it, the date and time that it was published, does it also record who made that change?
Yes, let me give you.
It's also got a revision history that you can dial it back if you've.
Fabulous, fabulous.
It shows a full revision of a page, so if a page has been edited four times, you can literally uh, look at each revision made to that page. Um, and of course, that's really to uh, let staff know that you're not gonna break anything, we can always roll a, a revision back. Let's say a mistake was made, or you said maybe someone changed the logo that, that it needed to be changed, or changed something else. It can always be reversed or, or, or rolled back depending on the revision that's made.
How um, often is this, um, the backend of this website up um, um, backed up?
Weekly.
Okay.
Yeah, weekly.
And how long do you, how long do you retain those weekly logs?
Uh, so we keep a remote copy every month.
Okay.
Um, and then a lo- local copy every other week.
Okay, great.
So I'm on in the Island, uh, township, uh, backend, you had asked about logs, so we have what's called simple history installed. Uh, and this literally gives that information, I can see literally everything that has been changed, done, by whom. Just today, uh, or yesterday changed, uploaded this particular uh, attachment, and it was on this page. WordPress found, uh, it's been analytics had an update, it gives me a full log of literally all activity on the site. Uh, even ones that I would like to see for security purposes like this, well, um, this is, this was probably about a tenth to log into the website, because the password was wrong. I saw one from my user earlier, uh, incorrect password was entered from my username. But it's another reason we always enable two factor authentication. You wanna make sure that we minimize any chance of any breach or any security threat on the site. Uh, but to answer your question, yes, everything is logged. Um, simple history just makes it a lot easier to read, see what was done, see what was changed, uploaded, attached, added to a page, literally everything under the sun. And it logs pretty far back, I think this retention. Uh, yeah, I can go by month, by day, thirty days, fifteen days a week.
Okay. Is there um, already or going to be like tabs you can pull to get like a copy of the newsletter, see the full newsletter? Other than just pull the dates out by different things?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Is that like down here somewhere? Or like, you could go look at our incorporating documents, or you could go look at our HR manual, or are we doing that?
Policies and things like that.
That kind of stuff, and then also uh, ways to give uh financially, so that's all coming into this too somehow, okay? I don't know if it was in a box or someplace else.
Oh, it's.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, where, where are the policies listed in this?
This is not here yet, but it's going to be.
Okay. So this is just version one dot O? Or, oh, if this is version like?
This is the.
Zero dot, zero dot one, right? Okay.
What you're, what you're looking at right now is our front page thing, homepage.
Okay.
So this, this is, this is the landing page for the, for the new website. There is some more refinement that, that will take place on this homepage, like we just kind of discussed. Of course, I would never wanna have a section without an image, we wanna make sure all images are here. Uh, all content is, is complete and ready to go. Uh, but where everything falls into place is our homepage. Um, and to make sure that everything is in the best possible spot as far as hierarchy, the layout, uh, the scheme of how everything flows on the page. Um, the next portion between the navigation and also the database for uh, the uh, info lab and library things, uh, it's really just talking about getting the, the pages created for each additional subpage. You mentioned uh, items that will probably end up on the about the library page, library history. Um, just giving this formal facts about the library, general library policy. What's the computer use policy, what's um, information about the board, um, information on board meetings and meetings. All of that information will be tiered in that particular page. But a link to that would normally appear just above where, where I'm hovering now, where I'm at the library or about the library um, as you see it here. Um, we've got a short list here. Um, again, you think, you'll be able to get to each of these in this menu from this top header, which will then take you to the main about library page, which will have all of this information that's here, there, so that so that visitors can do that here, this is just give, get us there quicker, so if you wanted to get the library policies, um, it's two clicks away, one here, and then second one here.
Okay.
But I just say this again, this is really just to, to make sure that the layout, the book, the field, the static, everything is coming into place on the homepage, because your visitors, this is the first thing that they'll see. The minute they get to, to type in the library's website, this is what they're looking at. So we wanted to make sure, um, literally that everything has its place, everything is uh, well spaced, well laid out, um, making sure that um, everything makes sense aesthetically, as, as well as functional. Last piece is just a, a, a little trim over on the left-hand side, we have a sidebar for social media content. Uh, I think someone just mentioned a bit earlier about YouTube content. Uh, if a visitor wanted to visit any of the library's current social media outlets, they can do so right from this sidebar. Um, we didn't wanna make it intrusive, uh, so it, you may or may not have even noticed this little hanging arrow here. Uh, but that was purposeful, we wanted to make sure that it didn't distract anyone from the overall uh, navigation and, and, and this visiting aspect of the site. But if a visitor wanted to go to any of these, um, to view the library's current uh, Facebook status and Facebook posts, Instagram as well, TikTok, uh, as well as YouTube, that is, is all accessible directly from.
Justin, um, when, when library first pops up, that newsletter request goes on there too?
Yeah, yeah, so right now, we, I think because I have been on the site quite a bit today, it's not showing, I don't know, you can go to a browser that I don't normally. And there it is. First time visitors get this pop-up, uh, to join the newsletter, to subscribe to the newsletter uh, directly from the website. Um, they'll only see this one time, if it's a frequent site, of course, we don't wanna have uh, this be a reoccurring, uh, nuisance essentially, we just wanna make sure, hey, uh, did you guys know that you can sign up for the newsletter, if you do so right from here, uh, it takes you directly to the contact contact form to subscribe to the library's newsletter. Right here.
Great.
It did pop up when I loaded it on my phone.
Nice.
Now I believe it's, I think it's three times, but again, I didn't wanna make it uh, very, very often, and, you know, pop-ups can be a trigger for some, for some folk that visit libraries websites, or just websites that are, I'm sure um, you, you guys have had your fair share of different uh, aspects of that, so with this, we really just wanted to capture um, that first time visitor, um, maybe someone that may not, may not necessarily frequent the website, but if they haven't seen it, um, they'll be able to catch it um, on the first level. And again, like I said, it's in multiple spots, the library sign, library newsletter signup is also down here in the footer, uh, just in case they did get it before.
It looks very nice.
Yeah, sure, I agree.
Yeah, very happy with it.
Excellent. Yeah, yeah, uh, yes, definitely coming together, uh, we've got uh, quite a few pieces we want to add in the next couple weeks uh, to really showcase a lot of the database pulling and the infrastructure on the backend that we have implemented. Similar to what, what I explained, we're doing noteworthy in the library services, uh, dynamic uh, file entry, so what we're, what we're focusing on is the database of the whole, literally everything that the library has for patron usage. Such as subscriptions, services, both in library and outside the library. I wanna make sure that all of that is added in where it's needed in certain spots on the website. It'll literally just appear dynamically, just like what we're seeing. So once those pages are created, you guys will be able to see that a lot for, uh, in, in it's uh in, in its development with everything that's coming uh, within the current development of the site.
Um. When's the beta gonna come out for this?
Um.
I agree.
Yeah, go ahead, Justin.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Well, we, we can start, we can start public rollout probably in the next few months, uh, I, I really wouldn't put it out completely publicly, because this, again, this is just a development site, this wouldn't be something that um, patrons would have direct access to, this is primarily for internal use. Um, and, and of course, you guys having that access. Um, what we would rather uh, it be a, a, a control rollout for our testing. After testing is done, responsive testing, US testing, uh, and all functionality with all forms, our email handling on the website, literally everything for library card applications, so the contact form, uh, suggestion box, anything like that. Uh, once all that's tested and training is completed with staff, we will start beta with ever that.
I think the, the board should be part of that beta testing in progress line. Just not over the app.
Okay, that works.
That would be great. And then us that would like to participate in testing it uh, in the, and I'm as sure, I'm assuming this is on the sandbox and it's not live, would be, would be great. Even if it was just a couple days. Fabulous, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hey, you're awesome. Thank you.
Okay, no worries, thank you all, appreciate your time.
Appreciate it.
Yours too.
We'll see you next week.
All right.
Very nice. Do I need to sign there?
You'll have a good night.
Either one. You wanna sign? All right. Well, that was very nice.
Very nice.
Okay.
I, for one thing, the tips are a little long than I would have expected as far as like, how tight it is right now.
It looks very good.
Yeah. It's encouraging. Wow, that's great.
Yeah, and it's, and I, you know, what he's doing on the backend.
Yeah.
It is, is, is very nice and.
Well, he's laying a good foundation, I think.
Absolutely, yeah. So next on the agenda is approval of minutes?
I moved to approve the minutes as uh, as filed, presented.
I'll second.
Go in favor?
Aye.
Fine.
I think we have five yes votes.
Oh, I'm sorry. There were, I just understood an error. Oh.
What?
What? Uh, under approval of agenda, it has, uh, William and Shagwell. I didn't catch it. I did not catch it the first time.
I win none of it.
There is a William. Okay. Sorry, I didn't catch that earlier.
Wow. So approved as amended, all in favors?
Aye.
All right.
All right. So I have no particular president's report other than I'm enjoying the fall-like weather.
And I do not have vice president's report this time.
Okay.
And I will report this time.
Okay, so that's you, Glenn.
So it's my turn. Okay. Um, well, looking over the, um, our financials for the month. I think the, you know, we're doing really, really well this year. Um, and we're, you know, if we look at the, um, the balance sheet, I think we're doing really well. Um, you know, spending's in line to what we expected at this time. Um, who's doing the financial? Okay, so the, I, I just have two things that I'm going to do in, um, the officer's report. Um. Okay, so, um, if anybody, if somebody had any questions on the finances today?
No.
If not, then I'm going to, um, make a motion to accept the August payments. The, um, this isn't writing there. Hang on. The, the, um, I'm sorry. The, um, the board, the minutes should have said, the report was presented, we want to listen, made a motion to accept the June bills for payment as presented. Okay. So this month, we're gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the July bills for payment as, as presented. Which are always really a month behind.
Okay, we got a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we got five yes votes. And then the other thing that I would like to bring up is, um, if we all look at the second page of the financials, we'll see the, um, line four for Flagstar. We have a CD that is, um, due, that's maturing on, um, September 4th. Um, and I would like to make a motion that we take that. I have to remember exactly how we said that. Hang on. I have to, I want to make sure I've got our motion right here. Okay. I'm sorry, Flagstar is going to roll over completely. Okay. That's, that one we already, we decided last month and that's going to roll over. I just need to send a note to Flagstar. And the other one that we have coming due is Vibe. And that's on, that's the very last one. I'm sorry. And it's due in, because we always do these two months in advance. So Vibe is, um, maturing on, um, October 20th. I, um, am going to make a motion that we roll over the entirety of that CD to an 11, 13-month CD dependent on the interest rate at the time.
I'll second for purposes of discussion.
Was that for both of them, for the Flagstar and for the Vibe?
Flagstar, we actually did last month.
That was approved of?
Yes, and it's going to roll over.
Okay. So then our next, our second.
This motion is for Vibe.
Okay.
To roll over as well for 11 to 13 months dependent upon, um, the interest rate.
So how are you going to handle the decision depending upon the interest rate? Well, that's usually. Making a motion.
That's what we usually do.
No, no, no. I meant so. It's, it's pending what? Pending that it meets a certain threshold? I don't understand what.
Okay.
The variable motion.
The, the, the mo, the motion, this is what we've done month after month. Okay, so we give it a range of, so we're going to pick either an 11-month or, um, a 13-month CD dependent on the interest rate. So the 11-month might be a special and it might be a better interest rate than the 13-month. If I say 11 month, we're going to roll this over by making a motion to roll it over for 11 months. That 11 months, we might be missing, you know, like a quarter of a percent.
That's why I understand now. I didn't understand that way.
Okay.
That's why when I seconded it, I wanted to.
That's why.
Be clarified. So again, so just want to clear.
One of the things that, um, most, most of our credit unions, they do odd months for CD renewals, okay? For CDs, um, maturity. Vibe is the only credit union that we deal with and actually the only banking institution we deal with that has a window. They, so like, um, Lakes is going to say, we have 11-month CD. And, um, Genesis is going to say, we might have a seven-month or a 13-month CD. Vibe does a window of like two months, so, or three months. I'll have like 11, they might have 11, um, 11, 12, or 13, okay? Um, and then they might have, um, you know, like, um, 14 through 18. One of the things I really like about working with Vibe, and this is, we've only worked with them for a year, is that they will also match. If there's somebody that, that, if there's another credit union in the area that has a rate that is within that range and it's better than their rate, they'll match that rate. So, um, so I don't know what the best rate is going to be in that 11 to 13-month window.
Good.
Okay.
So, yeah, okay. So, and I'm not going to reword your motion, but if the motion was to read that you were going to, um, it's dependent upon the best rate at the best time.
Yes.
Uh, period.
Yes.
Okay. Now I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I could, I can make the motion in that, in that way that I'm making the motion to roll over the entirety of the Vibe maturing CD based, based on the best interest rate between 11 and 13 months.
Best interest rate in term.
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay.
Yep, thank you. Makes sense to me.
Okay. So do you want to go through the wordsmithing or Carrie, do you have enough that you've got the motion flushed out?
When have I actually worked on this?
Other time, so you're.
Um.
We just need a, a second then.
William seconded.
I seconded for.
And then discuss.
Yes, sorry.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we get five yes votes.
And that's the finance report. That's the treasurer's report.
Okay, and thank you. Now, we're to you, you, April, for the director's report.
Uh, director's report. Disney Month, uh, we did receive our paid compliance check. Uh, in that 46,000, more than 6,000, that was higher than expected. Um, still great news. Uh, long to the thank you, she trusted Monsbury for redoing, uh, our voting, providing, uh, this professional feedback. Uh, we completed and submitted our workers' compensation audit. We launched our survey. Uh, at the 4:30 today, we've had 90 responses and I'm sure still many more to go. We are excited. Um, looking at some of the responses are very interesting and those will of course be getting a copy of that. That is great. We hosted, as you know, the White Lake Township Fire Department Youth Academy. And, uh, Amy and I are meeting with several white vendors. I'm putting our current one to kind of compare costs and get some improvement there. And our new venue machine was installed, so, yay.
Look at that.
Excited about that. Um, large thank you to Treasurer Newton and Secretary Francis for attending the summer reading bash and for, um, the Vibe Credit Union sponsorship photo op. So thank you for that. Uh, one of our pages, Lila, uh, has left us for school. She's going to U of M. Uh, and while I want to cry and be sad, um, uh, I guess I have to wish her the best. Go green. Uh, but anyway, uh, no, Lila is, um, she was one of our Girl Scout troops for, and so worked on the garden, these ended programming for you and then actually got job here as a page. So we're, she's, she's close to our hearts, so we wish her the best. Um, Mittens, the milk cat mascot, is going around to all the different libraries. This is just one of his pictures where he visited hubs and very happy to. And both hands. Our social media statistics were up. Our library app users were up, so also looking. Director connections, uh, same as usual, just attending a lot of meetings. If I look at my Google Calendar, it's like all meetings. Um, but yeah, getting, getting a lot of stuff going there. Kitchen gathering place roll down, uh, uh, we had to give that fixed, so that was all done. Also had a leak, the inlet side of the boiler feed had a bad quarter inch valve. Um, the pressure gauge was leaking. Uh, boy, I had to fix that. Um, little, just a little half hour squeeze of time there. Um, Johnson controls was out with their preventative, uh, progressive was out to repair two sprinkler leaks. It's amazing what happens on a building. Um, what's nice about the sprinkler leaks, it's nice to have landscaping volunteers. Because that's the second year in a row that I, one of our landscaping volunteers, because they're out there. Hmm. About that. And to let me know. David, uh, took care of some issues with Kim's office. Our friends are supporting our youth services library and their foundation for, uh, to go on outreach events. More on that later. Uh, they also are displaying some new artwork in honor of the library's 50th anniversary. That's the library at the Friends Corner there. If you haven't had a chance to look at the display case just outside of this door across the hall there, they have a wonderful display. This is so creative. So it really shows people what it means when they donate a book and how that benefits the library. So it shows what happens when the book comes in, um, where, how it, how it goes into the books, the volunteers that take care of it. I mean, how that makes into the money that they give us at the end of the year. Uh, a couple of our fans, volunteers who are here in the audience, just want to give a big thank you to you. Hope that you do. Thank you. A big thank you to our friends. Um, also, they just hosted their hypnotist program, uh, with 52 tickets sold. So that was a very fine event, uh, and very fun. Uh, also, so outreach is going well. We are working with the schools, uh, attending curriculum night. They've asked us to participate in their homecoming parade, so we might be building a blow. Uh, lots of good webinars, lots of great education and professional development going on for our staff. Uh, and we hosted the Library Network's Youth and Teen Services Meeting recently. So it's really great to have, uh, those youth and teen services librarians in our building. Of course, you know, I'm sure that that's kind of allowed through, you know, lots of fun now. Summer reading is complete and at this, and we will be presenting her report and presentation as she does every year, next month, September. While we had just slightly fewer participants, they actually exceeded the minutes and books that were read last year. So there's kind of what happens. Um, adult services are, Amy, uh, charitable and e-content. Again, lots of, uh, work with the library network and also, uh, not only their policy, but their content committee. Uh, and Amy is a selector on that as well, so she gives lots of great digital content for, uh, for readers and audiobook listeners. Thank you. Um, she also represented the library at the Backroads Bound White Lake 5K Half Marathon. And so thank you for that, as well as attended Digipalooza Conference, uh, 2025 in Cleveland. If you don't know what Digipalooza is, it has to do with overcrowded. So it's always a great learning experience, so we think of her as. We've got two new steam kits and it's our collection in Section Safari Kid. The SRP Bash Party was amazing. We estimated to be the most attended bash yet. Uh, I'm still waiting to kind of get some final numbers because we can even estimate what it was, but it was huge. Just amazingly large. Um, stepping back into that cart that the friends wanted to purchase, so it was purchased. Uh, fortunately, uh, when we got it out of the box, it was just kind of a knock noir. It was just too, far too flimsy. So we're going to be looking at some other options. So. Um, like I said, we've got the new landscape volunteer, invited to tour the ground, so luckily on that. Uh, one of our surfer's has started her masters to be in library science. So that's two staff members right now that are currently pursuing their masters in library science. Uh, anniversaries, David, one year, Daniella, five years, parade. Thank you so much. Glad to have him on our team. Uh, we added the MyList option on the mobile app, so thank you for clearing that up.
And thank you for doing it. I love it.
Yeah, I just, my friend.
Yes, I'm so happy to have it. Thank you.
Uh, and, uh, we now have our new IT consultants from the library network have started, so.
And how is that going?
It's not going well.
Can I ask a question about that? Um, you know, I know we're going to be closing, we, we talked about this last time we had a holiday. How often is the holiday closure, um, rotating?
Uh, so Heather, it's edited, so it's three times on there. So you should be.
Between, but how many times, how many other things are going on between?
There's a total of 10 and that's three of them. So three out of those.
Okay, fabulous. Because really about every three slides, it should say that. Thank you.
And it's already on the app and it's already on the website.
Fabulous.
Uh, okay, we're looking. That's, uh, circulation. So getting highest, uh, ice circulation, uh, as of on this chart, so. Been very busy in a month with a lot. I have 6,000, I can't even decide if four items circulated. Our new card registrations look good. Our door count was, uh, we did hit over 8,000 again, so second highest out of this chart. You know, staff, when we pull up and we, you know, sometimes when we pull up for our leadership or we've gone to lunch and come back and. What are these cars doing here?
I drove by here just a couple of days ago and it was like 7:20 in the evening. And there were 20 cars in the dr, in, in the front. I was like, wow, and it's still summer.
Yeah. Uh, we had our highest public computer usage in July. Vibe Vibe is fine. Uh, reference questions were highest amount reference question. I don't know what's going on by that. They are far busy and exhausted. Uh, overcrowded is good. People's good. Drive a window. I'm sure that will, as soon as the weather starts changing, we'll get more. Any questions?
Thank you. Thanks. Moving on to committee reports. William, are you going to cover building committee?
Uh, I can't. I think we should have shorter meetings. There's a lot to read. This building.
Maybe you need to meet or you just took the highlight.
Well, since I sent an email to the, to the whole board, I guess, stepping on my own tongue here. Anyway, uh, yeah, so the building committee, uh, we met Monday, August 11th at 3:00 PM. But assume actually, didn't we meet a little later than that?
It could be.
I thought we did. So it was more like four.
I think we met at four.
Yeah, um, uh, we did some, uh, we, we discussed the, uh, blue water technologies, outdoor sign. It's tentatively scheduled, uh, late September, um.
The, the website is going to, is tent.
No, it's blue water sign.
Oh, the outward.
Outdoor, blue water sign.
Sorry.
They're working. We're going to get scheduled a date after that.
Okay, great.
Uh, let's see, and then, okay, yeah, so then, um, their team is working on the paperwork. So we'll have it April, the next week. And so that you should have already probably got that, right? That was a couple of weeks ago.
This news just came to me today.
Okay, okay. So, uh, additional conversations, um, installers completing the projects, uh, for local schools should be giving us dates soon. Firing a lot of seal coating, striping. Committee requested that we include this project 2026 budget and also involve adding crosswalk near the stop sign. Seeking quotes for a budget amount, uh, roof company come out. And to fix the areas around the softens where the birds have nested. Uh, oh, the goals, talked about the, um, the cost of repairing walls and painting in 2026. We wanted to, wanted the budget to be, uh, 50,000 or less at this point. Uh, based on what we had, did you finally get those other? Okay, uh, what's, to investigate the cost of full coverage of furniture cleaning. We've done all these quotes, uh, about $500, take the budget. Uh, building maintenance program discussion, David started tracking weekly tasks. And then we're going to add on to the monthly. And then we're gonna add on to the monthly and regularly scheduled building pass, uh look to integrate with a calendar as well. We're basically talking about building a spreadsheet and driving it with a. A Google account. Uh generator, continue to keep uh our eye on the the ball on what we'll need for something like that. And we were reaching out to the township to see what their system was gonna be for the center. I call it the civic center, what's the actual name?
That works. So you're you're asking them what they're using.
Well, yeah, and if there's any way that we'll be able to, you know, tie in our whole power system into that, it's a possibility versus. Going ahead and spending, what would you say, three hundred thousand?
It was gonna be a lot.
Yeah, it was like three hundred thousand or something like that, just for the. Right, okay, so.
That would be interesting.
Yeah, well, it's just a question, right?
Right.
Is it possible? You know, we can always throw out the water thing, you know, how we help pay for their water, but um.
A good point.
Then uh Kim's office, yes, and I stopped by there, um. It may have looked like I did a lot, and we think we basically um eliminated some issues to. Go back to what everybody thought it was, and it was uh some air migrating from outside to inside. And um I hope that that seal on the bottom was the cause. And uh she had an odd odor that only she could smell, or it smelled obvious to other people once in a while. Um I, just so you know, that I have a mold airborne mold issue myself, so I'm real susceptible to smelling. Doesn't really bother me as much as anything, but I can smell it. I mean, I go walk into a room, basement, something's something's just not right. Uh Kurt, David was gonna cock those areas, and I think I talked to you, you'd already was working on that.
So it's finished cocking, um we the uh window company that did our windows actually gave us the. The ceiling stuck for free. Uh because I drove down there to get it. And um he was able to do all those ones, so it's it's all done now, so we're just separate. The mulch outside is the last thing we're going to replace by the window, just to see it back.
And we had a hard rain here. I mean, it was a short, but a hard rain. That might have caused a little to, nobody smelled anything after.
I'm gonna be talking to her to see, she's very sensitive about the smell, so she's outside of the office right now and just kind of. Waiting to see how it all sounds, so.
My suggestion is if it happens again. One day she's not here, you you run an ionized, an ionized machine, and you put it in there, you kill all the bacteria. And then see how fast it takes to come back again. Because if it's, if it if it comes back fast, I'm gonna tell you it's probably in the floor below the concrete.
Yeah, it's cruel.
If it doesn't, takes forever. It's just natural, you can't see it perfect, so. Uh and then the last thing was the the gathering place doors, heat lights issues. Um like coming through the through the doors, you you have to fill me in a little bit more of this, because I've kind of forgot about this one.
Yeah, so I actually reminded you, so definitely put up. There, that one there, it just comes through, the light shines, well, you know, we know because we're sitting here, it's it runs right through. And it just heats through, so we'd like to see if there's some sort of, uh William was suggesting maybe that film you.
Yeah, three M.
Right.
Staff over there, it heats them, and the adult staff, it's just the way the light winds up. Uh it can be on their computers, it could on that, and it just warms their rooms excessively. So.
Yeah, the glass is all E coated, so I can tell you right now, all that glass has. Break down the U V ray, the rays, but it doesn't stop the heat, that's the problem, so. Um darkening it, and uh like I said, you get you get somebody out here, um they're gonna have percentage of darkness. Show you some samples. Maybe even, you know, do a window and see if it works.
To see how it looks from the outside.
Uh it will darken, but it's not, it it's darker from the inside, I believe, than it is from the outside. But it does darken it.
I'd be curious about what the heat does in the.
And that that was it. I think their next meeting, hold on everybody, is uh Sunday eighth, at four P M.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh Becky, are you gonna do? For finance committee?
The finance committee, I mean, uh it's thirteenth at four. Um we discussed the twenty twenty-five budget update, the budget is on track, uh the penal fights are higher than expected and for. Room bookings were higher than expected, twenty twenty-six budget, we reviewed the first draft of the staff portion. C D updates, we discussed the five credit union C D review. Uh legacy sponsorships and donation, for sure, we made minor um edit to image of a lead to fix the alignment.
I added the next.
Okay, that's it. We need a naming rights policy in place before we can distribute the brochure to the public. So a naming rights policy has been procured from our attorney.
So we'll need to review that in either, I should, if we want to review that finance, or if you want to review it, policy. It's not really technically a finance, it's just going to affect. See what I'm saying? So I guess this is what I would defer, say, where which committee wants to review that.
And it's naming rights?
Naming rights policy.
I want to let Eric and I look at it first.
Yeah.
We'll take a look at.
Um for twenty twenty-five, finance committee goals, I've been met with the representative of the Community Foundation of Southeast Michigan to get some information. I'm trading from there. April is waiting for answers um in the question she sent to Four County Community Foundation. And Carrie scheduled a meeting with Huron Valley Educational Foundation. Uh we discussed the exploring and finding the millage options. Uh White Lake citizens approved the August millage by a margin of fifty-eight point eight percent to forty-one point two percent. Um forty-eight libraries had millages in August of twenty twenty-two, five libraries did not pass. The highest percentage passing was eighty-two percent, and only one library was in the eightieth percentile. The lowest pass was fifty point nine percent. Uh we did meet with uh the township clerk, confirmed we will want our millage to go on August, on Tuesday, August fourth, in the state primary. Early voting starts around July twenty-fifth, and absentee voting begins around June twenty-fifth. Anthony did mention we should consider hiring a millage consultant. Um the state's calendar for dates and deadlines hasn't been released yet, it's usually three to four months before the election. Until they publish a calendar, we won't have an absolute date, and that was provided by Anthony.
Can these, um the notes from our committee meetings be put in our Google Drive?
Yeah, well, let me see. We set the twenty two thousand twenty-two millage to our previous library director for review. She suggests reviewing similar verbiage used in the White Lake Police and Fire Millages from two thousand and twenty-two for guidance. Uh great, uh April has reached out to the township clerk for a copy of the two thousand twenty-two primary ballot to review that that language. Our next meeting is Wednesday, September tenth at four P M.
A question about the ones that passed or didn't did not pass, the one that barely passed at fifty point nine. Do we know what their demographics were, where they were, which one it was? I'm curious as to how closely they match us or not. That's.
There was four items on the on um millage items on that ballot, and we were the bottom. Because there was three, there was two fire and one. There was a, I think, there was a police, there was a fire, and there was a convo, police and fire, and then there was.
I'm just learning for the community that had the fifty point nine percent. I mean, that's really curious.
And I'm just gonna finish my meeting with H back has to be placed, so I'll send you guys about that.
Okay, great.
Did uh did Anthony mention why he thought August was the best one?
When going to go on the November one.
Here's why we.
Good chance to and to do the November one if this one doesn't pass.
Yeah, it may never pass me.
What did Jen say?
It gives you the opportunity to to go back out if it doesn't pass in August.
Oh, I got you.
Yeah.
I follow you, okay, okay, because the greatest turnout is gonna be at the other.
Yeah, right, but we always try in the primary. Because if it, for some reason, wouldn't pass, we have another opportunity to 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 go for it. And we need this to pass to be able to maintain our current operating expenditures.
I have to check the title, the title of the police and fire was renewal. I'm not sure if the if the libraries was, I have to, I have that one thing I don't like. The one that passed by only fifty point nine was Allendale Township. Ottawa.
They had verbiage in the police and fire that our library. Um attorney didn't feel like was a hundred percent accurate. And so we chose not to follow their lead at that time, the township's lead at that time. Which, going back and reading some of the other libraries, um in. Uh and we didn't have access to those at that time, going back and reading other libraries from twenty twenty-two. Most of them had this a very similar verbiage to what our township um fire and police did. So. It obviously was something that the that the um county, you know, has to approve our verbiage to, felt like it was, you know, it was appropriate, so. Um you know, when we get to in our next meeting, we're gonna have to determine if we're going to do a, just a renewal of what's there. Or what we call a renewal and a restoration for the headly amendment, you know, reductions every year. And that is really what we did for the last one as well. Um but we have to make a decision if we're going to actually uh list it as that. Because that's what we.
Last one was the the first time we had gone for restoration in probably three millages.
Okay.
Yeah, we had not done restoration.
I didn't realize that, because that was the first one I'd been involved in.
Yeah, yeah.
So the one that's um going away, why we're gonna replace, right, I mean.
That we want renewed.
If you want renewed, uh what was the term on that? How many years?
Ten.
What?
Seven.
Well, there are eight, right? There are eight year terms?
And while she's looking for that, did Anthony mention if White Lake's gonna bring anything?
The township, there's no police or fire.
There's nothing coming from White Lake, okay.
Which is to our advantage.
Oh, I I obviously, yeah, 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 because, you know, because the county is killing us. You know, but they're killing us with with the the last two millages, or not, like whatever you want to call it, yeah, they're they're killing us with it, you know. Uh twenty year. The park setback is twenty year. It will create over one billion dollars of revenue. Where are you gonna spend a billion dollars in parks in open county, and just that, but back to us. A lot of money for parks.
Okay, um this one is twenty eighteen uh to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
That's so seven years.
Yeah, seven years.
Does he mark?
Then the other one, the twenty twenty-two expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine. Seven years, and then the other one is no expiration.
So they're really six year, right? Because they go into effect the following January.
No.
Do they go into effect for that?
You'll get the taxes, um you'll get, when you, but if it passes in twenty twenty, in August of twenty twenty-six. By that December is when you start getting that, so yeah, that's.
By that December. Okay.
December one through February.
Okay, so it is, it will be for the twenty twenty-six tax bill, okay, thank you.
A half year.
Well, we only um receive the taxes. We're only on the the um tax bill in December, in winter, yes, it's only one to one. That's why we see all of our revenue in December, January, February from the county.
Okay.
Should we move on to policy committee?
Okay, we're we done with finance?
Yes, that was it.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead. Policy committee, we met on Thursday, August seventh at five P M, uh talked about a bunch of things. Uh a couple, one will be a new business, one will be an old business, when we get to those, talk about the policies, but the first one was the local author policy. And the local author material submission form, we got it back from the attorney, we fleshed out an additional section on author book signings and programs. Uh so it's approved by the committee, we'll be presenting that to the board for approval under new business.
Yes.
Old.
Oh, yes, because we looked at it once.
Yep, yep. Uh we also reviewed some proposed changes to the current unattended children policy, and we shuffled a bunch of stuff in this conversation. Because the attorney recommended that we get our patron behavior policy in order, to get our house in order on that. Before we did the unattended children policy, because they that they refer back, because there's like cross pollination, cross listing of these things. Um so we sent the patron behavior policy to the attorney for review, we got information back from them, but we haven't reviewed them yet as a committee. And we're gonna put the unattended children policy outfold until we bring updated patron behavior policies to the board for approval next month.
Okay.
So and then the final thing on that was uh on that meeting, was we reviewed the progress on the list of all the potential library policies. That the attorney recommends that we review, uh and one of them was the security camera policy, which we have completed. And we'll present that under new business.
Okay. All right, that's it.
That's it.
Thank you, Eric. Um I will just say for strategic planning, we did not meet, and we're not meeting again till October, is that right? September? November, November.
A little dashboard on the right of the calendar, or the right of the email is great.
Okay.
Pardon me, good?
September fifteenth.
Right.
All right. So let's move on to old business and your author policy.
So, as I just mentioned a moment ago, uh feel like a different person now, uh the local author policy, it is in your packets. And it has been reviewed by the attorney, um it's been approved. It includes the book signing policy, or the book signing material policy, I guess, for this, there's that in here, or yeah, in here. Um under items is three E C. Is the author book signing a program. Uh one of the things that we have stipulated there is on the last page is that if they are going to do a book signing, they have to give one copy to the library. Seems like a fair trade. Uh and then the other things all are, I think we've reviewed before with the uh author donation policy, basically. It's it it mirrors a lot of that, so uh unless, I don't know if anybody's reviewed it yet, if you'd like to review it, talk about it. We'd certainly do that, and then we will need to have a vote on it.
Is there any discussion?
So who's on the policy with you?
Gwen and I.
And April.
And April.
So you guys already done this, and the attorneys have already located?
Yeah.
We don't bring it to you until we've reviewed it, edited, and the attorneys have looked at it.
And we think it's solid.
We've spent quite a bit of time on this one.
Yeah, this we spent a lot of time.
So it's in its entirety?
Yes.
And move to the accept the local author policy E three in its entirety as presented tonight?
Well, second.
Uh favor? Okay, sorry, yes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the new business. You still have before that.
Um and I have a additional new business item to raise in our new business, since I was the time I mentioned it. Um what I know, Gwen, you mentioned it in an email, I wanted to make sure we talked about the newsletter and the millage notification stuff. So we can talk about the design and the and the overall concept, uh so we could add that to new business, that would be great. Uh so the item I'm covering first under new business is the security camera policy, which once again, we have reviewed. The attorney looked at. Um it's in your packet as well, it's a fairly short policy in this case, it basically says that we capture video images, uh conversations are not monitored or recorded. That it specifies where the locations are, uh that we have no obligation to monitor the cameras in real time from a indemnifying us perspective. Um and that surveillance footage is made for security purposes, basically to protect us, but aren't used for any other purposes. Process. If anyone wants to ask any questions about it, or. Okay, but again, this is one that we've left through.
Well, it's part of our retention policy already.
Yes, yeah, yeah, the last line says, the first our protection policy.
Good to see. Might have been really nice if we had had it here a month or so ago. Not on you guys.
Yeah.
All right, but just because of the situations.
Yeah, it's timely, so so uh I'd like to make a motion that we accept the security camera policy five K. In its entirety, that was written and included in your packets.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, five yes votes. Then this is for the T L N calendar, is that what this is for?
This is for meeting calendar.
Okay.
So the only change on this one that I was just thinking. November to November and December, we switch May to the third Wednesday, so that it's before the holiday.
Instead of two days after the holiday?
Right.
It seems like a good way.
What's June twenty four, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of off days for T L N, I'm not thinking of meetings, sorry.
Yeah, these are not all.
Yeah, these are, these are staff, this is for our meetings.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to um accept as um. As written for the twenty twenty six regular meeting schedule, the White Lake Township Library Board of Trustees.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, five yes votes. And then you had added, Eric, the newsletter?
Yeah, I wanted to talk about the newsletter and the millage, I know some of us have some opinions on it, and so I wanted to bring it up for discussion. And uh, see if we can. Come to some sort of a. For all consensus.
Sure. So um, I brought it up to you and.
I had already said.
Okay, so I sent an email um to the president and the vice president and the director when I um received this in our newsletter in the mail. Um, and you know, it's missing some very specific marketing and branding. That I was surprised, I honestly, just walking down my driveway and looking at this and thought. This is quite a fancy newsletter for the historical society.
Yeah, it was like, what was it for? Cause our name.
It it wasn't until I turned it over, that I realized, oh my gosh, this is our newsletter. The whole front page is, I feel like the we we missed a lot of opportunity on that front page. There's, our logo is nowhere. On these six pages. I was just.
It it is in the Q R code that's above.
Okay, okay, but seriously. Where's it it, there's nothing that says, you know, our fiftieth anniversary, it should have been, you know, highlighted really big, I'm just like. This was, to me, this, the whole entire um newsletter for this month. For the fall was, I felt like it was a really big marketing miss, we're getting ready to do a millage. Um, and I thought, you don't, e- until you're really, really looking at this, we don't know this is even from um, from the library. When you open the center part, y- you see at the bottom, you see this nice big logo for Vide Credit Union. Alright, but nowhere do we have our logos for the library, um. Also a big miss that I think is on this bu- is on this flyer, is nowhere on this flyer does it say, download our app. I like, these are, these are very simple marketing um and branding things that we should be doing. I don't know who's approving this, but I think that we need to have better oversight. This is very expensive for us to put out. And when you can't tell right away, when you look at that front page, it's from the library, it was just a big marketing miss for me.
That to to me, the front page had a lot of like.
Empty space.
Empty spacing wallpaper.
And that's the last one.
Right.
Talked.
We talked about it last time, so we didn't like the front page of it, so. Uh, you know, if there's some way that, I mean, I don't really feel like this is something the board should be involved in. But when we as board members have really brought this up a number of times, that we're unhappy with the way the flyer looks, something needs to change.
I know my wife picked up the mail and normally when she gets the thing from the library, she immediately hands it to me, says, you know, like, look at this to yourself and then see if there's anything in there we should all talk about. And she left it on the counter and didn't talk about it, I said, did the library thing come today? Cause I know Gwen got it, from me when I saw, and she's like, no, I don't think so.
You can't tell.
She and she had walked to the mailbox and come back and looked through the mail at that point, and I pointed it out, I said, this is the thing from the library, she says, I didn't even think, I thought it looked like it was from some society. Which.
So we need to make some changes and we'll take care of that, if someone wants to look at the next one and give, say. Yes, no, or do this, or don't miss that, happy to have that.
Yeah, let's just, let's have the president do that, I'd be happy to look at it, I know we've talked about it before, so.
For sure.
Yeah, and when we. You know, we're gonna crack a few eggs and make a good omelet, and yes, truly noted and, um, but um, yeah, we're gonna fix it. And I think make it look more, maybe it needs to keep an image like a magazine on the front, so we make sure that we had that nice name and a logo.
Well, you could even pull prior ones from last year. And that, you know, we didn't have the same concern with, and not necessarily copy them, but at least note what's.
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, when the wo- when the website gets ready to be launched too, I think having it to some degree mirror. At least for a month or two, the image on the website, so that they look like they're from the same.
I think that's a really good point, really good point, especially, like I said, as we're coming up to this millage, it's really important that this millage passes for us. We need to have. Our library branding out everywhere we possibly can. And for us to not have it on our newsletter at all. I just was really surprised because I know, I don't know who does our, our um. Our, our, our flyer that goes out, but I do know that we have people that we actually promoted. That actually work on our marketing and have had some marketing, has definitely had some marketing training, and I I just expect better.
We've definitely tried some new things and so lethal.
Okay. But I appreciate too the opportunity for Jen to be able to review this before it goes, before it goes to print. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So any announcements to add? Before we close?
The last, related to the millage and related, it sort of ties into what we just.
Oh, I thought that kind of.
No, no, there was one other piece of it that I wanted to ask about, was the comment about a millage consultant and hiring a millage consultant, should we discuss that?
Yeah, I think we need to know a little bit more about it, the little bit I know about it, because when I first looked at it, I I unfortunately um wasn't able to attend. The meeting that you had with Anthony, um, and I. You know, sorry that I missed that, but. Sometimes, you know, when you have emergencies, you can't do anything about it, anyway. So this person that Anthony recommended. Um, I don't know personally, but I do, I did some inquiries. And it, I don't, and I don't know what the cost is gonna be, but it might be really behoove us to actually look at this. Because I think Anthony talked to you about the fact that he has access to show um, like. Who actually voted? Okay, um, and. When we go to target, well, we can't target, we can't target, our yes campaign has to target people. There's opportunities based on what he can um pull from those, the, you know, previous voting. Um, specifically, instead of maybe sending out the yes campaign, sending out flyers to everybody in the township. Maybe we're sending out flyers to the people that actually voted in the last millage. Um, and at, you know, and actually people that are are patrons. So he has a lot of access to databases that are revolve around voting that we don't have access to. So um. It it, no, and I, and I talked to a couple of the people that have used him and um feel like that it's very advantageous to have this person. I'd like to know a little bit more about it, but what I have learned, you know, after you had this meeting, because I thought, do we really need this person? We might really need this person.
I believe if when you were gonna contact him to get some more information.
I can, I wanted to hear more, but now that I've heard, yeah.
It sounds like that there's some really good things that we might be able to get out of it, so, you know, we do this millage, we can't fund it, right? The library cannot fund asking this millage. But we, so there's formed a yes committee, um, and I'm assuming that April is gonna reach out to, you know, our friends. And they have helped us with this before, and you know, the the library itself can't ask people to vote yes, we can only ask them to vote. Right, and um, we'll have flyers around in circulation a- a- around the library about um, the information about. About the library and about how beneficial this millage will be to us, but we can't ask people to vote yes or no. Um, we as um, library board members can participate in the yes campaign. But we can't really um promote. The library millage, you know, as a library board person, but just as an individual taxpayer in the community.
Sure.
So yeah, April, Becky's right, if you could find out more from this gentleman about, you know, what is, what the benefit is of of using him and what that cost would be, it would be really beneficial.
Do you want to bring that directly here, or do you want that to come to finance committee first?
Well, we, we can't pay for it, right? We just need to know.
Information.
And 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 just as as an observer in that. Conversation.
But with, with that April has with him, sure.
Just as a, as an observer without a comment.
And can you follow up on us not being able to pay for it, it would seem to me it would just be. An item.
It's, I'm pretty sure it's missed a lot.
Well, our policy.
Oh, I I don't, um, you know what?
I thought that's what you said.
I don't think we can, I think it has to come out of the yes campaign. But I don't really know, that's a good point, I don't know for sure.
So who would know that, a lawyer or, yeah, okay. We'd like to know the implication of that.
Can we jump to Claire first?
Yeah, she's gonna know for sure.
That might be a great answer.
Yeah.
Right.
So what does the township do?
I was just gonna say, can you ask Anthony?
No, no, what does the township do when they run?
Don't know. I don't know.
Cause they, if we can't do it, they can't do it.
Right.
Right, we fall under the same.
Right, but I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a few things. Question, few things that we don't fall under that they do just by. By statute, but other than that, yeah.
And one of the things that I think that the yes campaign this year, this time needs to really um. Be very clear about is that, and a lot of people are unaware of this in our community, is that we are completely autonomous. From any other government entity, you know, we're standalone and we have to support ourselves.
That's sometimes a hard sell, isn't it, Eric?
I know you and I were caught up in some social media, uh, almost a year ago about it, yeah.
People don't understand that we're not part of, uh, you know, we're the White Lake. Township library, but we are not.
Yeah, they see the name White Lake Township and they think, oh, we're all.
And I I hear it all the time, that people think that we're part of the township, uh, government entity and we're not.
How do we get them to understand that difference? Cause I don't know that.
You have to keep repeating it, repeating it, repeating it.
But it's not something they want to hear.
Oh, that's true.
Now, see what happens is thoughts become facts.
Yes.
Okay, this is real world.
And perception is reality.
Oh, it doesn't make a difference, you picked a topic.
And perception is reality, yeah.
Yeah, the last time we had the millage, we had somebody that was on social media that kept saying that we um, were um, over budget and we couldn't pay our bills and. Um.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
You'll have that no matter what.
You know, and it was one of those things where you just sit back and think that, you know. It's not something you can really fight out on in on social media, and it's obviously not true, I think that, you know, we do a very, very good job. We're very conservative with with our budgeting, so.
Well, the problem with fighting something like that on social media is that the fighting itself then raises awareness of the fight.
Right.
And then it becomes.
It feeds itself, yeah.
Question, are we able to promote more of like, um, when, when the staff does their little snippets for social media? Can we promote more of the library of things? Or the idea lab, because a lot of parents I talk to don't realize.
They're very, they don't know, yeah, they don't know.
And, and you know, just thinking back now, like some of, a lot of the content that created doesn't really go into that. Um, you know, I'm like, well, this is available at the library or, you know. So many things are available that I don't know other people.
When we were here for the fiftieth, my wife and I walked in the idea lab and I was showing her around and she said, you do cake pans.
Yeah, that's always another one.
Long time, yeah.
I know if I bring my kids into the idea lab, we're going home with a cake pan.
Right, but that's another thing like. In the fall newsletter, you know, we have all the, basically the fall newsletter is all about all the programs that we have, and it's just one thing. It's not really promoting, other than programs, it that fall newsletter doesn't promote anything else.
I know, like on the website, you had, you had like images of things that you've um. Like cups that you've done for people, even just doing a Facebook app, because that, that is like a hot commodity now, first class and everything.
For sure.
You know, I think that would just try and get that reach out there and letting people see that that we have that. Um, and especially if they can even just do it online and send a form in online and pick it up, I mean. I think that would go a long way in getting that information out to the public.
Okay, alright. So does anyone wanna make a motion at eight thirty?
Well, there's an announcement section, right? I have to ask for announcements, or was there?
I said, does anybody have an announcement?
That's it.
Okay.
Then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.